Dr. Paul, as always, thanks so much for coming back. We appreciate it.
Thank you for being with us.
Absolutely. As some of you may know, in New Hampshire, we have a volunteer legislature and many of us still work for a living. So we're truly putting in our 60 or 70 hours a week fighting for personal liberty and freedoms in New Hampshire.
God bless New Hampshire!
There you go. And I have to be honest with you. Every time Dr. Paul comes to this stage, I've never seen a man work so hard to deliver his message and provide some inspiration for us. And I thank you so much for coming. So you're a doctor?
Yes.
Have a history delivering babies. What made you decide to become a doctor?
To make a living. Do something... Well, I started off in science in college, didn't know what I wanted to do. I could be a teacher, but I still had a biology major. But then about the middle of my college, I decided I wanted to go to medical school. It was just something that was inspiring, you know, for a while. I think I always wanted to be, but I wanted to make sure I could make it first. So I had to test myself and do the biochemistry and do the physics and the biology. And then I felt comfortable, and that's when I got interested. But there's something pretty ideal about being a physician. Some people have asked frequently, "What is your most exciting moment in life excluding your marriage and your children being born?" And I have named that moment when I finally finished college and medical school and residency and military service and went into medical practice. To me, it was sort of a relief that I would be doing something productive, I would be taking care of my family, that I had this responsibility. And to me, it was a real delightful moment for that, to take on that responsibility. And one thing about the specialty I picked was a very happy specialty. You know, I really respect the doctors who take care of the really tough cases. I wasn't emotionally adaptable to some of them. You know, it has a resonant when you go through some of the services where you take care of the very sick patients and you've got to have the doctors to do that. And they're wonderful at treating cancer and strokes and things. But my psyche was more for a little bit of a happier specialty. And one thing is, you have to get up a little more often at nighttime. But I kid about it because I think my wife mentions this little story she wrote, that, you know, I used to deliver papers and deliver mayo and deliver milk and these sort of things. But we had a little dairy in Pittsburgh, and there were five boys. And we'd get up and, you know, back in the old days, you got milk delivered to your house, you know, fresh milk every day. And we were very much involved, and all the boys, you know, more or less worked all the summers and we worked our way through college. But I hated getting up at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning. So I said, "When I grow up, I'm going to get a job where I don't have to get up so early." But I didn't do so. Well, I picked one. I traded a happy specialty for getting up any time of the night.
Well, thank you so much for delivering so many pro-freedom-loving babies in the line. How many babies did you think you delivered?
It's in the 4,000 range. Wow!
Wow, congratulations. You mentioned your wife. And I understand eating is a big part of the Paul family. And you guys have a cookbook. I hear there might be some copies available today. What inspired you guys to start creating an annual national-level cookbook?
Well, this campaign made it national, but it was something we did for a long time in the district. But I had been into Congress from '76 to '84. It was a short period of time. I always considered it a fluke because all I wanted to do was talk about our problems and our policies and not play the game of politics. So I never thought there'd be any way I'd make it like that to Congress. But my wife had warned me, "You better be careful you pick it elected," you know. But after four terms, I wanted to go back to medicine. So in 1984, I went back. And then after 1994 election, I thought at that time that maybe this country is going to do better, you know. The Republicans took over. Maybe they'll be serious and start cutting. So I was motivated to think that it was a shift in attitude. There wasn't a country, but it was... I never identified it in Washington, so in '96, I ran again. But by that time, there were certain factions that were very anxious to get me back because I was a little bit too independent for both parties.
And Washington hates that.
So they were cutting me down pretty sharply. Have you ever heard about in politics that they can get pretty nasty?
I don't know what you're talking about.
So the nastiness really bothered my wife, and it bothered me too, but I figured, "Ah, that's part of the game." So she says she needs something to counteract some of those nasty things they're saying about you. So she said, "Let's do a family cookbook and put pictures of the kids in it." And I said, and I kid sort of kid about this, I said, "That'd be terrible." I said, "What? Who cares about our family and cookbooks? They want to hear my speeches on the United Nations and the..." So I kid about that. But I said, "The truth is, is her idea was pretty darn good." Because in spite of how important the issues are, I do think people want to know about your family. And it turned out to be very popular, and I give her the credit. And she pretends that she doesn't know much about politics. I said, "You know, it turned out that that cookbook probably got more attention than I got for myself." But somebody heard the story about how successful that was to neutralize the negative campaigning without, you know, talking about anybody else. And so therefore, we made the decision now, and it just came out this week, there's a new cookbook. There may be some here, but it will be used, you know, there it is. It will be used both in the early, here as well as in Ireland.
Well, you know, it's great to see that you and I, as well as most men, married up. So you're a veteran.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for protecting us. Are there any other veterans in the room today? You know, you talk a lot about defending American sovereignty and our willingness or need to defend America. But you also talk a lot about what we shouldn't be doing, which is nation-building abroad. And I hear you regularly say, "Bring our troops home." And thank you for saying that. Under the Paul presidency, can you describe what your definition of our military defense really should be?
Well, it shouldn't be complicated. It's pretty well explained in the Constitution. We ought to have a strong national defense, defend our country, defend our sovereignty, which means that we shouldn't be the policeman of the world, we shouldn't be nation-building, we shouldn't be involved in entainment alliances, which means that you wouldn't be joining things like NATO and the United Nations and taking marching orders from them. I mean, the most recent invasion and interference in war was in Libya, and Congress wasn't even consulted. Marching orders came from NATO and the United Nations. So national sovereignty, it is a strong requirement in the Constitution for the federal government to provide the national defense. That was one of the reasons that they wanted to start, you know, bring the colonies together. Other reasons, of course, were the free trade among the states as well as a unified sound currency. But national defense was a major issue. And the strong advice of the founders was that you don't isolate us from other countries. What you do is you work very hard in getting along with as many people. That means extend friendship to those who will accept it and extend and participate in trade. If you do that, their strong belief was we would less likely fight with those people. And I use this, the example of what happened in the '60s, as a demonstration of this. I was called up during the Cuban crisis in 1962. By the time I was actually sworn in to the Air Force, the crisis in Cuba was over, but the Vietnam crisis was ongoing. Of course, later on, we found out exactly why we were fighting because there were a lot of deceptions and falsehoods told about...
That never happened in the government, Dr. Paul.
No, it never happened before. But, you know, we as a country were involved, just as in Korea, we were involved without a declaration of war. In Vietnam, there was no declaration of war. But the combination of the French and the Americans being involved in a civil war, really, in Vietnam, involved probably close to a million Vietnamese killed. We lost, if you count the missing in action, 60,000. It cost a lot of money. We ushered in an age that Johnson said, "It's no big deal, we can have guns and butter." They started, you know, expanded the welfare state, the Great Society, as well as the war. Of course, the guns and butters really had to be paid for in the '70s. But we left under dire circumstances. And if you're honest, if we're honest with ourselves, it was a foolish adventure. It cost a lot of money and a lot of lives. But the theory was that we had to do that where there would be a domino effect. That was the term used. It would become all communists. The Chinese communists would take over. Just think of what's happened. We quit fighting with the Chinese, even though they had a very bad reputation, their worst years of killing their own people, and they were ruthless, and yet we started talking to the Chinese, trading with the Chinese. But in Vietnam, what happened? We left. After several years, all of a sudden, we started talking to them and trading with them and investing over there. They were coming back and forth. And I thought, "Wow, just think of what was achieved in peace." It was never achieved in war. So I think if, under the dire circumstances of that reef, when I was called into duty with the confrontation of the Soviets and us over Cuba, and they had 30,000 nuclear weapons, and guess what solved that problem? It was talking to each other, diplomacy, getting on a red phone and saying, "Oh, you want missiles in Cuba because we have missiles in Turkey?" Well, I never would have guessed that. So fortunately, the two got together, and we took weapons out of Turkey, they took weapons out of Cuba, and the crisis was dissolved, you know, rather quickly. So I favored that approach over the saying, "Well, someday, somebody might get a nuclear weapon, and we have to endorse the idea of preemptive war," which means to me, aggression and going in. We need to occupy and take over and tell them what to do. I think that that is wrong. That's what we've been barked on. And I think defending this country is a lot different than occupation of other nations, which does a great deal harm to our safety.
Today, America's spending about $3.5 trillion a year operating itself, and yet we're bringing in only about $2.5 trillion a year. Our country is... Tom, Mom, we'll be right back to it. Our country's about $15 trillion in debt. And we have this issue with the Federal Reserve. But thanks to all the great work you've done in providing some transparency, we now know the Federal Reserve has shipped in and out, again, about $15 or $16 trillion. Think about that, five times more than we spend in our own country for our own people. Now, this week, we hear that the Federal Reserve's ramping up the prices again, going to be printing a lot more money, and this time, not trying to bail out or help America, but sending it to Europe to try and fix Europe's problems.
Taxation without representation.
Thank you, sir. Again, without any approval of Congress. Give us your thoughts under the Paul presidency of how you'd be addressing Europe's kind of crisis.
Well, I've been thinking about it, but I'm still undecided. Obviously, you've led me into a very special issue. Now, the Federal Reserve has to be exposed, and when it's exposed, the people will want to get rid of it. It's been an issue that's popped up throughout our history. Even when our country started, Jefferson and Hamilton argued about this. Hamilton won, and we had a first national bank, and then another second, a second national bank, and Jackson got rid of that. But now we've had a national bank or a Federal Reserve since 1913. It is off-budget budgeting, it's secret. That's why the exposure is the most important thing. But they do spend more money than the Congress, and we need to expose them. But the exposure that the people get is when they get involved, whether it was the bailouts in 2008 and '09, the penalty was laid on people. People ended up buying bad debt. We end up with the inflation, we end up with a weak economy, we end up with the poor people who are supposed to get all the houses, they lose their houses. But the connection between the Federal Reserve and liberty is what motivates me. I talked a lot about the Federal Reserve, but the key issue for me is individual liberty, believing that free people acting responsibly can take much better care of themselves than when the government either taxes us, borrows money, and spends excessively, or prints the money. But the connection is, is that when governments want to grow, they always take over control of the money because they want to be able to expand. They want to control taxing, but it's limited because, you know, you raise taxes too high, the people become pretty annoyed. So this is a seductive way to tax us without being upfront with us. So there are two factions in Washington that we have to be concerned about, the conservatives and the liberals. So conservatives want to spend for one thing, they might promote all this overseas spending, liberals for some other reason. So if they both want to expand the government, they're in cahoots together, and they like this idea of sending the bills to the Congress. So when, send the bills to the Federal Reserve, and when that happens, of course, it delays the pain and suffering. You can get away with this for a long time until eventually the bubble that is built by this type of financing finally has to burst, and there has to be a correction because we've overextended because it undermines liberty, it creates too much debt, and creates the business cycle. And we have that, way too much debt and way too much spending, and the government is unbearable because it keeps growing, whether it's domestic or international. So this is the reason, if we had been on a gold standard and followed it, the government couldn't print money, what would have happened is when they spend too much, under the Constitution, they argued a bit about whether the federal government should even borrow money. Unfortunately, they didn't put a prohibition. But this is assumed, okay, they tax, and then they borrow. But then, when they deliver these bills to the Federal Reserve, this delays it, you know, and the people suffer, but some people benefit by it. So it's a very, very corrupt system. If you didn't have the Federal Reserve, what would happen? And the Congress wants to spend? The Congress spends in response to what is perceived that the people want. You know, they want, whether it's rich or poor, they want some privileges and benefits from the government. So politicians respond, and before you see the suffering from the inflation, it's a good way to stay in office. What do you want? All right, we'll vote for that, whatever. But if you didn't have the Federal Reserve, what would happen is interest rates would go up, and interest rates would be a great penalty. And then the people say, "The interest rates are too high because the government's borrowing too much money. We've got to get the government." The government would have to back off. But when it's delayed and diluted, and the Fed prints the money, then it gets out of control, and they do this international banking. That is why the monetary issue is so important. So if anybody wants to restrain the government on wars or the welfare, they have to understand the business cycle and the Federal Reserve.
Absolutely. Anyone out there think our government's gotten too big? Anyone think it's spending too much money? Anyone think that overregulation is inhibiting job creation so we can pull out this recession? I know what guys have a plan. You've created a plan called Restore America, where you're the only candidate that's drawing a line in the sand and saying, "Our government is too big. It's spending too much money." Talk a little bit about Restore America and the cuts, and how you're going to put us back up on the solid ground and help make America the best place in the world together.
Yes. Because we have too much debt, we have to be honest with ourselves, it's overspending. And how do you do it? You have to cut spending. Now, just to give the opposition, the other candidates, a little bit of credibility, they do say that we should cut. Where the deception comes in with those in Washington, the Congress, the other candidates, the supercommittees and all, they're talking about cutting all the time. But they're really deceiving us because they're not talking about cutting. They're talking about cutting proposed increases in the budget. And these are baseline budgeting. They figure, "Well, the budget is supposed to grow 10% every year," or whatever. And they have this line that goes out. But if you cut a proposed increase, they say this is a spending, and it's ruthless and unfair and inhumane, and you're going to make our country vulnerable to an invasion." And they just go on and on. So when you hear this talk that the supercommittee was supposed to cut $1.2 trillion and pick and choose and tell us where to cut, it was only on dealing with cutting the proposed increases of $9 trillion over the next 10 years. It's nothing to do with cutting. And then the automatic cuts the same way. So nobody's really offered real cuts. So my proposal is you cut a trillion dollars of real cuts the first year. And because I believe that this money spent overseas is harmful to us and wasteful to us and makes us less safe, I want to cut half of that from overseas spending. Which means we have to change our foreign policy. We can't assume the role of the policeman of the world. Now, this is made to be sound by others, that this is all extreme, isolation, and so on. Actually, it's exactly what George Bush ran on in the year 2000, if I remember that. He said, "We need a humble foreign policy. We shouldn't be arrogant, or they will despise us. We shouldn't be nation-building. We shouldn't be the policeman of the world." And other Republicans have talked that, right? But they don't carry it through. So it's not brand-new, it's not different, it's very constitutional. But politically, isn't this a lot easier to cut overseas spending and building a billion-dollar embassy and putting in 17,000 people in an embassy in Baghdad, even though they're claiming we're coming home? This, to me, I think if the people knew this, they'd say, "Yeah, don't cut that." I mean, a lot of these programs technically that we have in this country are not constitutional. You take the food stamp program. It's done for humanitarian reasons, and now we have 46 million people on food stamps and all. But I don't even propose to cut that immediately. You know, what I'm saying is cut up these other things first, and then work on this and try to work our way out of it. But either side in Washington, both sides on Washington, will not entertain even the false scouts they're talking about, even nibbling away at the proposed increases. There's a coalition of Republicans and Democrats that don't cut one penny because we've got to take care... And they've been pretty blunt about this, "We have to take care of the arms manufacturers because they depend on this." And so this is, you know, the dilemma that we have. And I think if the American people knew this, we could cut. The other part comes from domestic cuts. I have five departments I would cut. The number one I would cut seems to be the most popular one to cut, and we could say, "Well, buy the money and actually improve the particular condition," and that is get rid of the Department of Education. The longer it's cutting five departments, I would also go back, a major step backward, go all the way back to budgeting of 2006. And I don't remember many who were talking about limited government ever thought the government was too small in 2006. That's a big cut. You can't believe how much the budget has expanded just in these last five years. So that's where the cuts would be. They would be addressing the subject. It would send a strong message that we are going to have a different foreign policy, we're going to have a different monetary policy, we are truly sincere about cutting this spending. I think it would send a strong message to the communities, you know, the financial communities, because right now, you know, our credit rating has been lowered once, it's likely to be lowered again now that we're, the dollar is going to bail out in Europe. That has to lower. But I think the credit rating should be lower than what it is because it means the value of your dollar is going down no matter what they say. You know, the cost of living is going down, people are struggling to live on their social security benefits, and that's what the real rating is. So in my plan and program, there would be a priority list, and the priority which I would want to not touch at this moment would be the people who are totally dependent, the poor, who are getting medical care, the elderly getting social security benefits in their medical care. But we have to admit the truth because there is no money in social security. We broke the contract. The government broke the contract. They said, "We're going to take this money and save it up and give it to you for your retirement." But they took that money and spent it overseas, so we have to reverse that, quit spending it overseas, and tide people over. That doesn't mean that everything is going to be perfect, and it may be. You know, if it doesn't work in three or four years, we might have to do some other adjustments, you know, on social security and all. But for now, if you want to try to preserve it, we have to do something like this. If we don't, all these programs will fail because the dollar will fail. And even now, we can't keep up with the needs of the elderly. It will become more difficult to keep up because the inflation rate will go up, and if you spend more debt and print more money, the inflation rate gets higher. So the more you spend, the worse it gets. So we have to cut this off. That is why I propose something rather dramatic and challenge the others to even talk about cutting real cuts. I believe you have to have real cuts.
No question, you're the only candidate talking about making a smaller government. All right, my last question before we open up to the crowd. Jobs, jobs are a real important thing for people. Explain how allowing companies to grow and expand and personal freedoms and personal liberties and the Paul presidency is going to help create jobs.
Well, just what I've said is along that line to get back to a more sensible approach because this whole thing, this whole thing would happen. A lot of people say, "Oh, you're going to cut this spending, the government's not going to spend the money. Won't that hurt jobs?" Well, there may be some bureaucrats. Their jobs may be challenged, and there will be attrition, there'll be less. But productive jobs have to be in, you know, private jobs. And we want this money. People say, "Well, if you're not going to spend this money, it's going to ruin the economy." But no, if the government quits spending the money, the people get the money to spend. And they don't have the inflation. But you do have to do other things. You have to cut the spending, the money has to go back to people. You can't raise taxes. You have to lower taxes. You have to get rid of capital gains tax. You have to get rid of the tax on the re-importation of capital. We're only one of two countries in the world that taxes are repatriation of money. That's why our businesses want to go overseas. So you want to do that, but you need deregulation. You have to have an environment where we can become more competitive. But it's also related to the finances. We have had the advantage of printing the reserve currency of the world. That is very, very special privilege until it ends. Then it's a very, very special penalty. But up until now, it's been a privilege, but we've been able to print money, and that's our best export. So we export our money to China and different places that we have to order cheaper goods. But the jobs go overseas, but we end up with debt. So that's why we have a $3 trillion international debt, the biggest in the history of the world. So that has to be reversed. So you have to deal with all those programs, but you have to create a different environment. But you also have to deal with the psychology of the system, the expectations. And I described a little bit about changing the expectations on foreign policy to, "Wow, the troops are coming home. They're going to be here, and they're going to be spending money. Wow, there's going to be no new wars, there are going to be less wars." And this sets the stage so if we can move in the direction of less taxes and less regulations, that will be the case. A lot of people still get worried and say, "Yeah, but you're going to lay some of those politicians and other bureaucrats off and want this to be devastating and isn't that stimulus?" But one thing to check if you're really interested in this is look at the recovery after World War II ended. 10 million military personnel came home suddenly. Spending went down more than 50% because we were spending so much. Taxes went down 30%, and we finally ended the Depression. And the jobs weren't... Some who believed in the Keynesian economic theory that prolonged the Depression were still saying, "If they come home, there'll be a disaster. We've got to have job programs and do all this and subsidize this and that." They didn't have time to do it. Before you do it, the Depression had ended. So if you have the right environment, whether the troops, you know, whether you have 10 million troops from home, and there would be nothing of the stress of that sort. I mean, there would be some, there would be shifts, but just allow the people to have the incentive to work hard and keep what they earn. Believe me, if you had the right environment, it wouldn't take us that long to get back on Earth.
That is the American dream. All right, ladies and gentlemen, again I ask that you provide the independent voters who have yet to make up their mind the opportunity to ask their questions. We have a couple fine young gentlemen walking around with microphones. So we're to jump down off the stage and if you can raise your hand, we'll go back and forth from either side and we have a few minutes in order to do that.
Dr. Paul, let me pick out who you want to get a question from. Sorry for the feedback, folks.
Hi, I have a foreign policy question. Some of your other GOP candidates, like Huntsman, think we should expand the counter drone bombing. But the Brookings Institution estimates this is killing 10 times as many civilians as militants. Do you agree with Huntsman or do you think we're making more enemies than we're killing?
The question is, should we continue the drone bombing? And he suggests that it hurts a lot of people who aren't particularly targets. A lot of other people get killed. And we blow it off by saying that's collateral damage. Don't sweat it. Which means innocent people are killed. We build more enemies that way. I don't believe we should do any drone bombing unless it's authorized by the Congress. I voted for the authority immediately after 9/11 to go after those individuals responsible for 9/11. But this is way out of control. As a matter of fact, the Senate just passed something this week. Because the war on terrorism is vague and mystical. It's worldwide and it's undefinable. So therefore, the whole world is a battleground. The Senate this week said it includes the United States. Which means that if you could be associated with anybody or any group that might be associated with somebody else, you could be a target. You can be arrested. And it was explicitly said by one of the senators, "Well, they're associating with the wrong people. They're dangerous. They might be Al Qaeda and they don't even deserve an attorney." I mean, this is what's happening in this country. So it's this whole notion that we think that we have the authority to bomb any place, anytime. Just think of the mess that's in Pakistan right now. Not only do we bomb in Pakistan and kill... We're aiming the bad guys that want to kill us. Innocent people die. At the same time, we're giving billions of dollars to their government. And it's absolutely foolish. So unless there's something very explicit... As a matter of fact, there was one provision in the Constitution that I tried to resurrect right after the 9/11 crisis because even though I voted for that authority to go after those responsible, immediately it was out of control because they ignored Bin Laden. They went in and started a war against Iraq. He had nothing to do with it. So I introduced the resolution to relook at the principle of Markham Reprisal, which the founders put in the Constitution to go after the pirates. So if you want to have a limited war and you have some enemies and you don't want to declare war against the world or a country that wasn't, you know, literally responsible, you could and you could do this legitimate with a whole idea of restraint. So yes, I think it's very bad. I think that should just be stopped. I think those wars should be stopped. I think we need to bring polar troops out.
Yeah, I work in the aerospace and defense industry and I've got three questions in relation to that industry. What's your current assessment of that industry?
Are you talking about NASA? Aerospace?
Aerospace and Defense, made in fact. What's your current assessment of that overall industry? What's your assessment of the black budgeting approach and process? And what's your vision for the future?
The future of everything?
No, the aerospace and defense.
Oh, aerospace. Aerospace, you know, is being challenged right now. And I'm from Houston. We know a little bit about NASA and the aerospace industry. I'm not a strong supporter of spending billions of dollars to go to Mars. You know, to me, it makes no sense. Even though I love the idea. I love the technology. I love the science. But what we need, if people in this country would like to go to Mars, what we need to do is have such a prosperous economy that you have more Bill Gateses of the world who would like to, you know, play this game. Already, we have private industry talking about space travel. I think that is fine and dandy. As a matter of fact, when I was in the Air Force in the 1960s, I was tempted. I thought, "Boy, I'd like to be the first doctor in space," you know, so I really liked the idea. But we spend way too much. Now, I endorse the idea of technology that has to do with national defense only. And that was more of a concern, of course, when the Soviets were there possibly launching missiles at us and all. But there's a lot of spending in NASA that I just don't think that we need to do it. And it's a distraction. It costs a lot of money. And it isn't like saying, "Well, if you don't spend any money on space, there will be no experiment." No, there'll be, like I said, there'll be maybe more money. And it may be less wasteful. You talk about the black budget with the secret budget. Like, I don't believe in any secret budgets. I don't even like secret budgets in the CIA or the secret budgets with the Federal Reserve. We have this whole thing turned up on its head. We have a Constitution. It's supposed to be there. The Fourth Amendment is supposed to protect our privacy. The Patriot Act has thrown out our privacy. And the government has now had all their secrecy. And when we get whistleblowers which should be honored, and we have laws that protect whistleblowers, if they blow whistles on things politicians don't want to hear about, they get penalized on it. So I would say that we need much more openness with government. But I would not be further expanding and putting more money into some of this civilian exploration. But I would look at anything that had to do with national defense. So it depends on what we do. I mean, if we have a free and prosperous economy and we have more private investment in space, I think it would move faster and better and it would be just more exciting. But in this day and age when we're flat out broke, I don't think we should be entertained by saying, "I wonder what the different planets look like." Even though me being involved in science and all, I think it's really fascinating. I think the telescopes are just magnificent. But I happen to believe that that wouldn't be all gone if we had a free and prosperous society. Thank you.
Congressman Paul. The Constitution... The Constitution requires a President and Congress to protect us from enemies foreign and domestic. Who do you perceive to be the domestic enemies of the United States? How will you deal with these threats? And then I'd like to reserve a follow-up question based on your answer.
Well, the domestic enemies are found in the people who endorse philosophies that I find to be unconstitutional and anti-American in the sense that they don't protect our civil liberties. What I just talked about, what the Senate was doing this particular week and what we do with the Patriot Act, we are like our own enemies. We have done a lot more harm to our liberty than any threat from foreign. There are no foreign threats right now. There's no other country now that is on the verge of attacking us. They're not capable of doing it. We have more weapons than everybody else put together. And we could probably blow up the world 10 times if we wanted to. We just don't need more of that. We need more common sense. So the people who endorse bad ideas and allow the undermining of our liberties, I see them as our real enemies because they're undoing what a foreign government can't do. And I think that is what we have to think about. What the Constitution said, how we protect that, why liberty is important, why dependency on the government is bad, why this notion is that we're going to make everybody safe and prosperous around the world. And the biggest challenge is the arguments that they use against us, whether it's, you know, welfareism is home or doing good around the world is that if you don't do it, you don't care about people. "Oh, don't you care? They're killing it if they go there." You know, there was going to be, you know, a lot of killing by Gaddafi on his people if we didn't invade and do these things. Of course, it was fiction. We had to go into Iraq because Saddam Hussein had a nuclear weapon and these sort of things. So we first have to decide what we should do, but second, our own worst enemy is our willingness to believe so much of what the government lies about to us. You know, whether it was the Tonkin, Golva Tonkin Resolution, he gets involved in Vietnam or whether it's how they got us involved in Iraq and these various places. So in many ways, we're our own worst enemies. But we have to counteract this argument about, you know, if you don't have these programs to take care of poor people, whether it's medical or education or housing, that you don't care about people. But if you care about people and you understand economics, the way to help people is free up the system. You have more prosperity and more better distribution and a bigger middle class, the freer is the society. And we had that. But because it's never perfect and because maybe there's 1% or 2% who do suffer and need help, you can't throw out the whole system and say that we have to now endorse the idea of transfer of wealth because you start with a little bit, you sacrifice 100% of the principal and all of a sudden, we end up with what we have today. So it's the philosophy of some people who don't understand what freedom is all about, I see that as the greatest threat to our liberties here at home.
My question is specific about domestic threats. The Council of American Islamic Relations was found to be an indicted co-conspirator in the Holy Land Trial. Do you perceive this organization as a domestic threat?
I didn't hear the... I didn't know what organization.
The Council of American Islamic Relations was found to be an indicted co-conspirator in the Holy Land Trial Act that took place in Texas. Do you perceive this organization as a domestic threat?
I don't have an opinion because I don't know enough about it and I'd have to get more information to make a legal decision on what you're saying. I think most, everybody in this room understands exactly where I'm coming from, but I can't deal with that particular narrow subject and work it into...
Can I rephrase the question?
So I won't be able to answer.
Here we go. Where's him? Here we go. I have a question about term limits. Do you believe that senators and congressmen, US senators and congressmen should be limited to certain terms and regimens in the Constitution? That during that period, you had farmers and, you know, senators who went and served and then went back to their livelihoods. Entrenched bureaucratry.
He asked about term limits. And then in the early days, you know, it was different. Citizens were politicians. Today, you have to be a politician and stay there and work there in full time. What I'd like to do is return the size of government to those days when you could be a citizen politician and you wouldn't have to worry about term limits. I favor term limits, but I don't see it as a panacea. I had introduced term limits, you have to change the Constitution, even in the 1970s. We never got around to voting for those until the 1990s. And I voted for all of them to limit terms, but they all went down, you know, rather generously. There wasn't a whole lot of support. But the truth is, that itself won't change anything. There's been voluntary term limits. People sign a statement, "I will leave in six years." And the more ethical people did leave in six years. And sometimes they left and they've got somebody else that was worse than them. And others who were less ethical would take the pledge and not live up to it and then get re-elected again. I don't think it's the solution. I think the problem is this concept that we have on what the role of government ought to be. And if you don't change that, if you think the role of government ought to be that we're the policeman of the world and we want to run a welfare state, you have a monetary system that subsidizes everybody and govern in secret, no matter who you get in there, it's going to be bad. So it's sort of trying to solve the problem by more rules and regulations on individuals that might want to lobby Congress. I don't think that lobbying is horrible. It shows you how much it's out of control. But regulating lobbyists means you regulate everybody because you're petitioning Congress and you don't want to do that. What you want to do is, Washington is like an auction. You know, they take money from us and they have all this power, so they auction all this power on. You've got to get rid of that. If you don't get rid of the power and you don't hit term limits or rules on lobbying, the only other thing that we could do is send only ethical people to Washington who would resist the temptation to play those games. But I would probably vote for term limits again, but I would not... I'm not sending my energy as if that is going to be the solution.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have time for one more quick question.
I was wondering what you would plan on doing about the obvious growing media bias. It seems like I can't find you unless I'm looking on the internet these days. And I think you have a lot to say. And I think that I'm watching debates and I'm watching through my TV.
I'm not sure. Do we need to start a website where Ron Paul?
Let's stop telling people.
Hire Jon Stewart to be the PR man. It'd be nice to say, "Well, it's a free market. They're the TV stations. They do what they want." And you have no ability to say anything about it. Well, it's not exactly a free market because they all get licenses from the government. But assume that they're as free as they can be. We don't have any control. We can't... If a station is nasty or exclusive and all, there's not a whole lot we can do. But we live in a different age now. It used to be three majors. There's probably like five majors now. Boy, there's a lot of cable and there's a lot of websites out there. Sometimes we put things out on a webpage, website. And I don't keep up with all these numbers, but they say, "You know, you see how many hits you got on that thing? That's bigger than so-and-so's TV program." So fortunately, technology is helping us on this. But it is a struggle and it never seems like it's actually fair. But I think when a message is strong and powerful and you're persistent, eventually, truth wins out in the end. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to thank everybody who's come today. We've been on the road, the congressman's been on the road since Wednesday night when I started reporting. This is our third town hall meeting, just as huge as the other ones have been. We just really want to thank you. We want to thank the folks that have come in from other states besides New Hampshire. We know we're close to the mass border. I know we've got some mass folks and some folks from Connecticut, Rhode Island, probably Maine and other Kansas. Thank you very much. Now, one thing that I'd like to ask on behalf of the congressman is that people would seriously consider coming up to our office in Concord. We've got 38 days until primary. I can't tell you how critical it is and how close we are to hitting the numbers that we want to hit up here in order to get that vote out. We really need your help to come up, make calls. So give it serious consideration. If you haven't signed in, please sign in before you leave. What we're going to do as we do leave, as a congressman likes to do, is to have a chance to let folks take some pictures. What we would like you to do is...